All right, let's go ahead and get started. We're welcome all the people that are here in the chamber. Yeah, even you Jamie, and all those in TV land. So, I've asked Chief Steve Adams to give us an opening prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet this evening and discuss the goings-on of the city. We ask you that Thy Spirit of inspiration and revelation will be here with our good council, Mayor, that they might be able to make the proper decisions and choices for the citizens of Spanish Fork. Father, at this time, we also ask a special blessing to be upon the Joseph Skinner's family, that they might know of our love and concern for them, that they might feel of Thy presence and Thy support and Thy love for them as well. We're so grateful for the opportunity to live and to serve the community of Spanish Fork. We ask Thee to bless this community, that we might continue to grow and prosper and do the things which would help us to help others, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I've asked Councilman Argyle to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to turn a little time over to Councilman Mendonhal.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I'd like to invite Jeff and Debbie Strong, as soon as they get done signing the roll, and Angie's making a sign, come up to the front, so I can talk about them a little bit, maybe embarrass them a little bit. But just all in all, what we want to say from a city standpoint is thank you for being part of our community, thank you for the inspiration that you are in our community. I invited Susan Chapman here to come embarrass you a little bit more and go into some detail about your family and the great people you are. She's probably pretty busy, she does a million events, but suffice it to say, the Strong's were involved in a project around the holidays, where the community rallied, businesses rallied, and it's because of who you guys are that those people came together. And what that meant for the community was an awesome thing too. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that you guys would say you're probably blessed for some things that happened around the holidays, but you did a lot more in blessing the community and getting people together to help out a good cause. So, I wanted to invite you to say anything, if there's anything you wanted to say, and then I have something to leave you with as well.
Okay. Well, number one, thank you. I don't know how you do a thank you with a big enough exclamation mark. The project in itself, and with Random Acts coming in, and, you know, finishing off our basement, it was amazing, it was huge, it was astounding.
Gorgeous. They did a great job.
It was really crazy at times. Of course, you know, the surprise was mostly for Debbie, so she was gone, didn't know what was going on while I was trying to juggle ten kids and those with special needs and make sure they had all their medications and, you know, but Susan and the other neighbors were huge in being able to do that, because I believe on Monday night, which seemed to turn into, you know, a cul-de-sac family night, but we had over, I think, a hundred volunteers and those coming in and out of the house and construction work going on, and it was, and my children looking at me like, wow dad, you know? This is really a party, a man doesn't know about it. So, you know, and it was, so it was, it was just amazing. Can't say that I don't want to go through it again. And I was just taken back with, I cannot express the amount of love and gratitude that we felt that came from so many faces and so many people. And truly, just thank you so much, it was amazing.
Wow, that's awesome, that's awesome of you to say. The project that I think everybody probably knows a little bit about, but I sent some pictures to Scott earlier today, I didn't put a picture of the finished product up there, there's a, like you mentioned, Random Acts has filmed it, and then they'll be talking about it or releasing it in March sometime like that. But this is a picture I snapped of John Little, our inspector, that I believe that was Monday, late Monday, early-
It was late Monday night.
Yeah.
So, I even had people looking at me going, a building inspector came at this time on Monday night?
That's amazing.
To John's credit, I called, when I called him, he flew in from out of town and said, I'll be right over to get the inspection done, so the rest of the work could progress. So, that's him telling the people that they're okay to proceed, and this is them proceeding later that night. Councilman Argyle was there with me loading that, when we piled that sheet rock up there, Chad, I didn't think it would go anywhere very quick, but it sure did.
Real quick.
So, I was amazed watching these guys put that up, and just the project as a whole was an awesome thing to witness and see. So, I wanted, while you guys are here, just to mention some of the donors, and Susan, you're here now, so maybe you can come up and join the Strong's. I will tell you, my initial experience with this was this night when I got there with my boy Nash, and they had some banners up saying, hey, don't tell anybody about the surprise, which is cool. They had more people than they needed, from the beginning and all the way to the end, which these guys that have done this before say that's not always the case. So, it's pretty neat to see. I will tell you, when we ran around the corner, probably the first emotional experience for me was, well, there's an emotional experience, there's Susan crying. Sorry, I got your pride face, Susan, but Debbie, that's when you came down the stairs, they huddled some of us back into a back room and said, be quiet, we're doing this, and it was all smiles and some tears for the reaction that we could hear going on. So, we're excited to see the film of how that went. But seeing you through your window, Jeff, like you said, taking care of your special needs kids, was something that got the better of my emotions as we went in and out of your basement window. And just an amazing thing that you guys do, taking care of special needs kids and adopting kids, you're more than deserving of what this was in the community. Susan, do you want to say anything about the Strong's? This is the neighbor across the street from the Strong's that-
Well, there's so much to say, and they inter-
Susan, step up.
I need to hear you.
Oh, sorry. No, they're amazing, and they're the most selfless people that I know, and I can say that really wholeheartedly. And so, I get to observe their comings and goings quite frequently, and I don't mean to be like one of those nosy neighbors that watches out my window or whatever, but they, it's incredible to see them with wheelchairs and with, you know, with their children, with their children that can't move around as well, and just with the needs that they have. But yet, they are very self-sufficient in a lot of ways, and they don't ask for help freely. We have to pound on their door and say, how can we help you? You know, let me help you, can I help you? And stuff, and they'll finally, once in a great while, just to make other people feel good, let them help, you know? But yeah, they're pretty incredible, and they don't just give a home to this family, they give a family, or to these kids, they give a family, and they're their kids, you know? And you can just feel that, it's just truly an amazing thing, and they're fun, and like any other family, they joke and they play, and they, they're just fun to be around. So, it's an honor to be in the same vicinity as them, so we love them.
We love that, we're proud that you're from Spanish Fork, and we love you for the inspiration that you are. The other part that caught me was when the reveal happened and they surprised you and all your kids came down, and one of your sons carrying another one of your kids down the stairs, and again, it brought home to me of the great people that you are and what you do to care for others. I want to just quickly mention some of the donors, and I'll miss some of them here, but rest assured, they'll be on film for the Random Acts show too, when it comes out in March. But just a few of the names, Brad Wilson and Greg Adamson with Heart to Home have done this type of thing before, along with Christina Nielsen, Ken Roberts, Susan Chapman, Shepherd's Carpet, Brad Tanner with Triple T Heating and Cooling, Ace Hardware, Maple, the Maple Mountain High School football team showed up first day to help load some stuff downstairs. We appreciate the coach and Dave Boyack for helping us line that up. Rock Canyon Bank, L&amp;W Drywall here in town, Eddie Bowen, Kyle Wood, an electrician, Brian Jensen, Drywalling, Disruptive Advertising, Ethan Reacher, Ryan Nelson, Lowe's, a new business that's coming to town, helped out a lot. I mentioned Councilman Argyle, Mayor Laufson came up, New Skin, Canyon View Medical Group, who they wanted to specifically help out with the chairlift that goes downstairs. The Rotary Club here in Spanish Fork, Tabitha's Way, Costco, and along with all your friends who are members and neighbors in the community. Again, I'll mention that Brad and Greg said they've never had so many volunteers and so much, so many funds donated for a project like this, and it's because of all the donated supplies from businesses and people that I just mentioned, that there is an overage that was created. And so, really, one of the reasons that I brought you here tonight was to present you with a check from the account of funds that were donated. This project was, you know, upwards of about a $40,000 project, but because of all the donated supplies and labor and materials that came from people, it left $7,543.46 in an account, and we're here to give this to you tonight for you guys and the inspiration you are to your community. So, thanks again.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for the time, Mayor, and thanks again, the Strong family.
A great example of people to give, and close to my heart, right there with the adopted kids, and so, yep, very good. Thank you, thank you, and a special shout-out to our community for coming together for a great cause, so thank you. Okay, let's go into public comments. Anyone that would like to come address the mayor and the council, it's public comments, you're sure welcome. Seeing none, I'll go to council comments, and let's go to Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. One person that might have got missed on that, well, that I know got missed on that list, Mike, was you, and just appreciated all of your efforts in helping facilitate that. We got your email early on, and you took it and ran with it, and a lot of that success was because of you. So, I know you didn't put your name on that list for a reason, but I thank you for your help with that. The Strong's are wonderful people. Last night, we had a wonderful opportunity to attend Police Banquets, my favorite event of the year, surrounded by the greatest, the greatest people, the protectors of our community, and just really appreciate Chief Adams and the way he leads those individuals. And I'm still safe to say, I'm the only council member that has been through TASER training.
And you probably will still be.
And if that record stands, then, well-
Always willing to take it.
Always, Chad, you hear that? You're always welcome.
I heard.
Okay.
I was involuntary.
But very, very, very great, great get-together with Spanish Fork's finest, and thoughts are with them as fellow officer just north of, we have a great relationship with Provo City, they're wonderful to work with, and the garbage and the electricity and all of those things, and so our hearts do go out to them as they are mourning the loss of an officer. It's a very, very sad situation, and my condolences to them. Wanted to invite Heather with the chamber out to help us with what's going on right now.
Sorry, I was a little late today. We were running out of judges at my daughter's swim meet, so if I have like splashes of water all over me, that's why.
Perfect.
All right, so we just have a few quick things. Our January Business of the Month is Clegg Auto, we're celebrating that tomorrow at noon, and it's just down on the north end of Main Street. We also have a ribbon cutting for the new Sherwin-Williams, they're going in down by Verizon, Macy's, Joann's kind of area right down there, that's Thursday at noon. On January 14th, we have a stakeholder meeting for the Association of Utah County Chambers. Hopefully, the mayor will be able to join us, it's going to be in Provo at the Zion's Building, it's from two to four. This way, we're going to be kind of getting everything together and getting ready for the Valley Visioning Summit, which is coming up in April. We also have our installation banquet on the 24th at 6:30, this will be at the new Oaks Event Center up at the golf course, so the Shalana's catering, and we're going to hopefully highlight your new facility for you that way. We'll give out lots of awards and recognize the new board members, and so hopefully, all of you can make it for that. Then the last thing I have is, along with the Valley Visioning, we are doing local workshops in different areas. The one that's in Spanish Fork will be on February 12th, and it's at six o'clock at the high school in the gym. So, it's basically a way to invite the public, we want input from everyone, they're going to have access to maps where they can kind of help us decide where they think the growth should go, because by 2050, Utah County is going to be doubled in population. So, this is kind of our way to get everyone together, get their input, so just kind of a kickoff into the Valley Visioning Summit. Envision Utah is the one who is actually handling this, so I'll have some information that'll get sent out probably the end of this week or first of next week, and has surveys and the different workshops that are available. So, if you can't make it to the one in Spanish Fork, there's one in Payson, you know, they're up to PG, so try and make it to one if you can, it's going to be a good tool, I think, that we can help guide, you know, our lawmakers and things like that in how we want to see the growth in our county go. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, Heather.
Thanks, Heather.
Heather does a wonderful job, we sure appreciate everything she does for the chamber, our chamber and business community is vibrant here in town, and it's as a result of having wonderful people in place. So, thank you for all you do, Heather. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Argyle. Thank you, Mayor, I'd just like to second last night at the Policeman's Ball, grateful to rub shoulders with the officers of this city. It seemed like it was just two years ago when we approved the officers and the ambulance to start using Narcan, and I think about our last two policemen balls that we had, and think that instead of celebrating death, we've been celebrating life, and those saved by that simple little drug that's been available to and our officers and our ambulance and them carry with, and so quickly resolve that issue instead of the opposite, which was very nice to hear last night. And I appreciate each and one of those officers we have in our town, especially, as Brandon said, kind of a sobering evening in light of stuff that had happened earlier in the week. Thank you. Chief Adams, we appreciate everything that you do, and your leadership, and your officers, and the way they conduct themselves is so well-known, and I am grateful for them and the safety that they provide for our city. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Beck.
Thank you. I won't go into too much, but thanks again, I echo what Councilman Argyle and Gordon said. Two things, first of all, the first meeting for the 2019 Miss Spanish Fork Competition will be held on January 26th at 10:00 a.m. here at the Spanish Fork City offices, and this meeting will be an informative overview of rules and regulations to compete. Participants must be age 17 to 25, and at least a graduating high school senior residing in the 84660 ZIP code. Spanish Fork boundaries with proof of residency. The pageant will be held in March on the 16th at Maple Mountain High School, and additional dates for workshop mock interviews and rehearsals will follow. So, if you are interested or have anyone here in town that would like to be to that meeting, that will be again on January 26th at 10:00 a.m. If you have any questions, you can contact Director Natasha Lockhart. And then, the other thing I wanted to just go over was Pam Jackson, the director at the library, wanted me to share that the Harry Potter escape room that was held over the holidays had 472 people attend. Our youth service employee Haley oversaw this and was very, very creative. Santa was there at Christmas, and then they also had a noon year's party. Kids celebrated the New Year at noon on the 31st with a magician. And then, regular programs have started back up, and they are just ready to help the citizens jump on board if they're interested in all the different opportunities there, and you can go to their website or Facebook page and see it up. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Scobes.
A couple of things to report on. In December, we had the Utah Lake Commission meeting. Highlights from that, they had on display a marsh master machine, which is something they use to go out to mitigate the phlegmities, which is an invasive weed that's growing around the lake. They also talked about an RFP and things that they're putting out to look at other ways to control the algae bloom that happens generally each year, but that's a big concern as they look at more users on the lake. We also had, also went to the Veterans Council, Veterans Council meeting, they're working on displays of uniforms, old weapons, old military memorabilia in the Veterans Memorial Building, it's something that they will have available for people to be able to see when they, when they use the facility. So, a lot of the veterans are donating old uniforms, old equipment that they have for that, and they are currently looking and planning on the Memorial Day Celebration, Memorial Day Program, even though it's January, they do a great job, the Veterans Council, in preparing that, and so, they have an invitation out or are preparing an invitation for a speaker. They don't have the, they do have the theme yet, but not to be announced quite yet, but they're working, working hard in that venue. Thirdly, this morning, we had the South Utah Valley Animal Shelter Meeting, talked about budgets and the financials. One thing of note, and this is especially more particular to the public at large, the board had voted to discontinue checks for shelter fees effective immediately out at the animal shelter, just credit cards or debit cards, I guess, just card-type transactions, just due to the fact that no one really uses checks much anymore, and they've had some issues out with that, so they voted to discontinue accepting checks. Let's see, and then lastly, Chief Adams, for you and Mayor, so that you're, well, Mayor, Council, and Chief, so you're all aware, over the holidays, you know, you have a chance to visit with family and friends and stuff, an extended family member is a public safety officer, is a deputy with one of the counties here that we live near, and he had come up and said, well, you're on the Spanish Fork City Council? I said, well, yes, and he said, well, I want to thank you for the department that you have, the police department is what he was referring to, and he had talked about the fact that officers around know the quality that the department is. In fact, there are many officers that are waiting with bated breath to try to be hired with the department. He mentioned most specifically the climate of the department benefits, training, things that they do, and so, he was thanking, or just wanted to express his thanks because of the great, the great work that you and your lieutenants, your sergeants, your whole department, everyone does, it's made it a place that other officers want to come here, but at the same time, it's also created an environment for other officers in other departments, other cities, that they are able to get benefits, training, and have a better climate, because they can leverage what they have with what Spanish Fork provides. And they're able to say, well, Spanish Fork gets this training, why can't we get it? Or, Spanish Fork does this, why can't we? And so, you know, especially in a time when your officers are perhaps the busiest during this holiday season, that was, that got me in the feel-good really nicely, just to know that you and your officers, you've created a climate where they want to be here, others want to be here, and that they have the training and the resources needed and necessary. So, to the mayor and council, that was from someone who does not live in Spanish Fork, wanted to share their thanks for that, and certainly, Chief, if you would pass that on to your officers, thank you very much for the quality and caliber that they are. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Mendonhal.
Thank you, Mayor. One point I'd like to mention about the Strong family project is, one of the evenings, Susan called me up out of the blue and said, hey, I've got this Costco money that basically the Costco employees got together and wanted to be part of that Strong project, and she said, can you call the mayor and have him come up and give this to Jeff? And she didn't know the mayor all that well, I think I know him better than she knows him, but I said, yeah, I'll call him, and so I got him up here, he came right up, gave that to the Strong family, and what I didn't, wasn't completely aware of, and I know she wasn't aware of, but it worked out, was that Mayor and Cheryl are adopting parents as well, and special needs to the nth degree of foster care and all that. And so, the connection there, I got a video that I'll have to show sometime, they don't want me to put it on social media yet, so I can't do it yet, but I'll share it at some point of a very touching moment between two dads that foster children and adopt children, and so credit to you and Mrs. Mayor for the good people you are there, Mayor, there wasn't a dry eye in the house, so. Really quick, had a couple Rotary meetings since we last met and this morning, our Rotary Board meeting, President Tracy Franzen gave out this booklet that goes through the state's Rotary Clubs, and, you know, just again, speaks to the volunteerism in our community, but just a couple numbers off our Rotary Club for 2018, '17 and '18, 150 total volunteers on projects, 290 total service hours, 2,270 total lives impacted, and 34,650 total funds contributed through a number of things in conjunction with the chamber, with the golf tournament and different things. I know they appreciate the synergy that happens between the chamber and Rotary, so good things happening at the Rotary. My other meetings were with the League of Cities and Towns. Again, I've directed the rest of the membership to make sure they go back to their council meetings and report on some of the materials that they receive at the League of Cities and Towns. With the legislative session coming up, you're going to hear a lot about respect, collaboration, and outcomes, which is what we're focused on to, in working with our state legislature to have the best outcomes for residents in our cities. The Active and Healthy Program, just awesome, we got a couple giveaways going on right now for people that post pictures of what their New Year's resolutions are. I went so far to get the gym membership, Brandon, but you haven't seen me at the gym yet, but that's a step, and we're taking baby steps, and the gym parking lots- And the gym parking lots are full all over the place, so that's what I'm waiting for, those to die down. Then I'll be hitting the gym hard, and Brandon will keep me on my toes.
Saw the photo of my empty cookie dough bucket, right?
I did see that, yes.
Just wanted to be clear.
You did kill a whole bucket of cookie dough. Then with the Parks and Rec Committee, we had a great meeting yesterday, great volunteers there on that committee. And the announcement of the RAP Committee, the Recreation Arts and Parks Committee, that will help recommend of what those funds will be spent on. The applications will be open next week. And so here's the public announcements of be ready to put your name in. The link will be on the city website, which Scott will get put up, and it'll be open for a few weeks. And so any recommendations the Mayor and Council might have, or anybody in the public, you can put your information into that form next, starting next week. And that'll come before the Parks and Rec Committee and the Council to pick who's on that committee to help us spend those funds. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. I appreciate that. Just a couple items. One, speaking of your membership, you don't really need to go get a membership. You just go down the trail and walk. My sweet wife and I, we've been walking whenever the weather's been really good. We've been walking there. We were there today, walking the trail, and you never know what you're going to see. You know, today, we saw a horse on the trail. And she has two hocks that I think have adopted her because they follow her around as we walk on the trail, which is kind of cool. But the trails are in great shape, and people are using the trails a lot. There probably isn't a day I go by that I don't have someone stop and thank the city for the trail system, which is kind of cool. It kind of interrupts my exercise just a little bit, but that's okay. But it's well-maintained. They were there today, cutting down some trees that were falling over the trail a little bit that could cause some issues. So I just want to shout out to our staff and our employees that help keep that thing going. It's open during the winter. They plow that trail. So if you haven't been on it, get on it. If you've got a dog, go ahead and get on it, but make sure it's on a leash. It was nice to see the horse was on a leash, walking down there.
Did they pick up after he dropped?
I hasn't mentioned that to them, because there was some there. And so I said, we expect our dog owners to pick up their stuff left behind, and especially our horse owners. So that was good. The other thing is, I had an interesting lunch last week with two of our interns and We're really good here in the city about having interns come and work for the city and show them how a real city's supposed to work. And they get the best training. And it was just kind of really interesting to listen to those two young men talk about their experience of working here in the city and ask them what, Seth at one time said, what was your favorite thing? And they said, you know, riding in the ambulance. That was good. Sorry, Chief, you guys didn't cut it. They thought that was kind of boring.
What, they said?
I don't know. Seth said, you need to come on a Friday, Saturday night.
We like two of the hours.
Yeah, it was kind of a dull day, but which bodes to our city. That's great. We like it that way. So it was good. But I just want to shout out to Seth and all those others that have interns and the things that they use here for the interns, and that's good. Okay, let's move on to Spanish Fork 101, parking during snowstorms.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight for SF 101, we're going to talk about snow removal. And this time of year, we get, we often get asked one of two questions. Why wasn't my street plowed? Or why did it take so long for my street to be plowed? And there are a few answers to these questions, and we'll briefly cover two of them and focus more on a third. So first and foremost, the city plows and maintains any streets or roads that are owned and maintained by the city. So on this map to the right, anything that's in blue or green or yellow, these are city-owned and maintained streets. There are many streets in the city, like Main Street and Canyon Road, that are either owned by the state or the county, and they are responsible for plowing those roads. And so if you're driving and those haven't been plowed, it's the responsibility of the county or the state to plow those and not the city. Another reason why a street may or may not be plowed is the fact that if snow gets compacted and turned to ice, our snow plows can't really do much about that. And so we can go through and help mitigate some of the ice issues, but the plows can't necessarily push that ice around. So that's another reason that some roads may not get plowed, or it may take a while to get them plowed. The largest reason, though, and the greatest reason that we see for why roads don't get plowed, or they get plowed later, is that our plows can't navigate the road. And this is in large part due to vehicles that park on the roadside. And so we'll talk about that this evening. Here are just a couple of examples where you can see our plows trying to mitigate and navigate this road here. And you've got cars parked here, you've got some up here, and how do they make this curve? And likewise, this plow trying to make this turn with some vehicles parked on the left-hand side. So there is a city ordinance that prohibits parking on city streets during and immediately after snowstorms, up to forty-eight hours afterwards. And the clock really starts ticking once the snow starts to accumulate. And so that, as a resident, that's how you can tell whether or not you should be parking on the road. If the snow is sticking, don't park on the street. And this is really to fulfill several purposes, right? First and foremost, we want to get the streets plowed as quickly as possible so that you can get where you need to go, whether it be work or school or other activities, grocery store, or other things that you need to do. And we want to do it safely, and we want to get them done thoroughly. And in fact, we have some roads that if cars are parked on the side, we can't even navigate that road. The road is completely inaccessible to our plow, and so we can't plow. And if vehicles aren't parked on the side of the street, then we have fewer incidents of plows damaging vehicles, right? There's no vehicle there for our plows to accidentally nick. It provides for safer conditions for our plow drivers, especially in areas that have very steep roads, or they're narrow, or they've maybe got walls on the side and things like that. And so by having no cars on the street, it makes it a little bit safer for our plow drivers, as well as you as you drive down the street. And lastly, it helps to get rid of some of those nuisance vehicles that are always parked on the side of the street. If we have an ordinance to help prevent that, it can reduce some of those nuisance vehicles. So we have a couple of examples. Tyler, if you don't mind, I don't know if I can activate that from here. If you can click. Our plow driver's got some videos.
[inaudible]
Go up the street here. I don't know, Jamie, if he was actually going to go up there or not, or if he had to stop there and back out.
On the left-hand side of that five-foot retaining wall.
So four-foot retaining wall over here, and so kind of a tough spot for our plow driver. And then Tyler, can you go to the next one? It's not clicking for me, but here's another video. And I think this is coming around the other side. Is that correct?
[inaudible]
So on the right side is going to be a maintaining wall, and here you've got two vehicles right on that curve. And if you looked to the left, and this plow gets very close, he ends up turning off the vehicle, or turning off the camera to make sure he can navigate that. But that's a pretty tight pinch right there for our plow drivers, right?
He actually had to back up straighten up.
Right. So it's pretty close if you look there. So he ends up backing up.
He backed up a couple feet and straightened up a little bit.
Which actually is a terrible thing for a snowplow driver.
It is.
It's spooky, it's creepy.
We have some [inaudible] up there.
[inaudible]
Right, so if, on a regular day, no cars are parked there, and it takes the plow five minutes to do the street, but they're having to back up and re-go at it, well, it's taken them fifteen minutes, and now you're pushing all of your other streets that you need to plow, and that compounds every single time you face one of these streets. So when we remind our residents to not park on the street, the first question we get asked is, okay, well, where should I park? And that's really up to you as the homeowner or the tenant of wherever you reside to find a place for you to park, whether it's you're playing musical cars in your driveway and double parking in the driveway, or parking somewhere else, and doing something to help resolve some of the issues on the street. But that's your responsibility as a tenant or a homeowner to decide and find out, where do I need to park so that I'm not parking on the street? And then second, we get asked, well, how is this enforced? And our city policy and the ordinance allows us to issue warnings on the first offense, and then on the second offense, issue a citation. So just a quick video that our great crews over at SF 17 put together that we'll be running on SF 17, it'll be on our website, social media. Just a quick reminder with some additional footage about not parking on the street when it snows. Whoa.
During winter months, Spanish Fork City is committed to removing snow and ice from public roads as quickly as possible to provide safe travel for citizens. City ordinances regarding snow removal requires residents to remove vehicles from public streets once snow begins accumulating for up to forty-eight hours. Doing so allows streets to be cleared more thoroughly and creates less incidents of damaged vehicles or trailers during plowing operations. The mayor has authority to extend the forty-eight hours in the event of an unusually large storm. You can assist in snow removal operations in several other ways. Travel at a safe distance from snow plows at all times. Never pass or attempt to stop a snow removal vehicle. Advise children never to play near or in a snowbank near the roadway. Exercise extreme caution when driving in inclement weather. Safety for you, other motorists, and pedestrians is the highest priority. For more information, visit spanishfork.org and the city's social media pages.
So please help us.
During winter months, Spanish Fork City is committed to
Not parking on the road or the street during or after a storm. Because again, the quicker that we can plow your street, the faster you can get out and get to where you need to be in a safe manner. So please, please avoid parking on the street. If you have questions or want more information, spanishfork.org/winterparking. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Scott. All right, let's move down to consent items. I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent items minus item F.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon. Second. Second by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business.
I don't think Jamie got to say anything about.
Oh, was he supposed to come up and talk? Did Scott take his thunder?
[laughing]
Anytime I could get you up here, I'd love to get you up here. Anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm actually good.
I promise to get you on the next time.
Okay.
Payback for all the other times you. We won't go into that. Okay, Whitehead and Industrial Substation Transformer Bit Award. See, Kelly got to come up.
I need to announce.
Yes, you do.
Kelly Peterson, I'm the Spanish Fork Electrical Superintendent. We're asking you to approve purchase of two new substation transformers located, one is on 200 East and around 2000 South. It's our Whitehead Substation. And the other one is on 300 West and 10th North, the industrial sub. In tracking load on these substations in the last few years, we're seeing growth to the area that these two substations feed. And with the hospital coming and the requirements of the hospital, they are requiring a redundant backup feed so that if one substation goes down, we can pick the hospital up with a transfer switch, and they see minimal outage. They're paying a high-impact fee for that service, but we need to upgrade two substations to be able to make this happen. We've got the request, you've got the memo there in front of you and the cost of doing this. The price they gave us was if we purchased both transformers at the same time. So, and they are honoring a price. They added, from a substation we did two years ago, they added the cost. It was only about $50,000 more with the cost of what metals are doing with the tariffs and everything. We feel this is a good and responsible quote. So we're asking for your approval to approve the funds because this was not a budgeted capital project right now. This is because of our five-year master plan study that we are doing, and they come back saying these are your needs.
Just to add, we don't have these funds budgeted to spend today, but we can, with a future revision, make them available. We won't actually need to spend them probably even until the next fiscal year.
They're requiring a thirty percent down so that they can buy the materials today. These won't be built and delivered to us till about December of next year.
So we'll need, with a future budget revision, of course, we'll budget any amount, the amount to start the project, the down payment, and then the rest would come with a future budget revision. However, the lead time is, as he said, about a year.
Yeah. When we first started this, lead times were eighteen months. And with the schedule of the hospital, we asked them to hold a couple of positions for us. Now we're down to around eleven months left. So they were willing to hold the positions for us without us issuing them a PO or money because we've done business with them and bought quite a few.
So December this year, or December, not for a year and a half?
This coming December, we will take delivery of these two transformers. Any questions?
No, it's in here.
So the price tag is there. It's around $1.3 million.
Three hundred and fifty-one thousand.
If you want to be exact, okay. Questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the purchase of two substation transformers for Whitehead and industrial substations.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Resolution 19-01, amending the Spanish Fork City Employee Personnel Policy Concerning Driving and Sick Leave.
Mayor and Council, as you know, we're always trying to keep those that come to our community safer. So we tightened up our driver's license policy a little bit and added some incidents in there. So if we do a driver's license check each month on all of the employees that we have that drive for the city, and if they have any of the three following things happen, then they will not be allowed to drive for us till they get those cleared up. So if they don't have a valid driver's license, sometimes they'll expire, and we don't know they expire until we get that report. They're usually really good about getting those up to date quickly. A DUI conviction within the last six months, or this one you guys can relate to, moving violations. So this is a different type of moving, though. We talked in the work session about the difference between a motion and moving. The last motion that was made, or I guess the last time you guys approved something, you did it really well. So if you have four moving violations recorded within the last eighteen months, so don't have four moving violations.
Are you saying like we never have done it right up until today?
I'm not saying.
That's terrible.
Wow, Tyler, we're calling him out.
I'm going to go back and look at film after this, but I'm not saying one way or another yet.
Wow, that was, that hurt.
I get it.
So that's one of the items that we'd recommend that you approve. The other part is our sick leave policy. We've never defined clearly in there if the sick leave that we allow employees to buy out on an annual basis or transfer into vacation time, whether that vacation time has a cash value or not. We have two types of vacation time. One has a cash value, one doesn't. This proposes that if somebody buys out their sick leave, that that would be converted into vacation time that would have a cash value. Any questions on?
Yeah, I'm just curious, who pays for the MVR charges every month? Is that a service that insurance does?
It's part of our, yeah, so our workers' compensation insurance, that's part of the package they provide for us.
Gotcha.
Great. Any other questions? See nine- Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution 19-01, amending the Spanish Fork City Employee Personnel Policy Concerning Driving and Sick Leave.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
That passes. Ordinance 01-19, Cleaning Up Provisions of the Uniform Sales and Use Tax Ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. So, when we passed the RAP tax, I was going through the code to see where we needed to insert that into the code, and as I was doing that, I noticed in our sales and use tax ordinance that we had a number that didn't look quite right. So, I made a note of that, and then, we got the other things done. I came back to it, and in the ordinance, you'll see Section 59-12-203 of the Utah Code. That's a correct citation. That's not the citation that was there for a long while, and the legislature changed that sometime in the past, and I happened to notice that. So, we're just updating the reference and cleaning up our code.
You didn't tell Tyler that, did you? Because I wouldn't want him to call you out on that one.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
That's one, you get to move on.
All right, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion on this one.
I move that we approve Ordinance 01-19, Cleaning Up Provisions of the Uniform Sales and Use Tax Ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. This also is a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, we're going to go down to board appointments. I would like to, on the Library Board, reappoint Teresa Facer and Nathan Melton, and on the Parks and Recreation Committee, reappoint Lindsay Duvall and Doug Ford, and on the Seniors Board, reappoint Mary Lou Brandon and Kate Holson and Marie Spencer.
I move we approve the mayor's recommended board appointments.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to adjourn to the work session?
No.
Yeah.
Can we talk to F for a second?
Oh, Ecolab, Senior Center.
Yeah, this is the Senior Center Dishwasher. Currently, the Senior Center's dishwasher is not functioning correctly. It's broken, and can't replace it or can't repair it. We need to replace it. It's actually quite an expensive dishwasher. If I remember right, about 15, close to $15,000. We're in negotiations with the company, but the contract has some, a couple of weird clauses that we're not comfortable with, specifically about states' laws and things like that, Missouri versus Utah and a few other issues. We're hopeful that we can get those addressed, but, and before our next council meeting. They'd really like to get that piece of equipment ordered and on its way if possible. So, I think might be appropriate, if you're comfortable with the idea and the cost, approve it subject to some, those legal challenges being overcome and Junior being comfortable. Yes, please. Yeah, come, please.
So, I thought we were just pulling this off until we had these resolved, but there's...
Seth always messes up.
There's three items in the contract that we recommended they be changed, and the one is the state law. So, the company we're buying it from is in Minnesota.
Not Missouri, sir.
And the agreement says it'll be subject to the laws of Minnesota if there's any dispute. And my feeling is, you know, we didn't go there to get this. They came to us. We're in Utah. We're not going anywhere. So, it ought to be subject to Utah law. And my recommendation was if they don't, if they're not willing to change that, let's go to a different provider and get it. But I haven't talked to Dell about that. He's been ill. The other change is, it's a one-year lease with monthly payments, and the contract says that it'll be an automatic withdrawal from our account to their account, and we don't do that. So, we're recommending that it be just by monthly invoice and a check payment. And Kant's recommendation, as I understand it, is if they're not willing to change that, that we go elsewhere and get it. And then, the last one is, there is an 8% annual increase, which I indicated, you know, if that's what it is, it is, but that seems a little bit high, and they did indicate that that could be negotiable. So, we will, if you're willing to approve it subject to those changes, we'll draft the changes out and send it to them, and they may or may not accept that. And if not, you know, I guess I can't speak for myself, but as to the laws of the jurisdiction, I'd recommend if they're not willing to change it, we find somebody who is.
Couple of unknowns, some big ones. So, if you're not comfortable and you want us to wait as well, that's also not a problem. We can go two weeks washing dishes otherwise, in other ways. I don't want to put it all on your shoulders and make you decide, but...
I show them.
Any thoughts, any questions?
Are you guys okay with this?
They're anxious to get it because they're kind of without...
Washing dishes by hand down there?
And a lot of dishes, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Get them down, yeah.
Okay, if everybody's okay with that, I would entertain a motion based on what Junior just told us, negotiating this, and if he gets it resolved, that they can go ahead and order this. I'll move that we approve the lease agreement with Ecolab for the Senior System Dishwasher with the three conditions being met or not met.
Three changes in their proposed...
Three changes in their proposed proposal.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, adjourn to work session?
Work session.
I move we adjourn to work session.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, go to work session. Thank you for everyone that was here, especially you, Jamie.
Yeah, Jamie, epic.